The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, do you want to change to the public hearing agenda? So, are there any considerations of agenda additions or deletion for the public hearing, which is of the superintendent contract? So, by law, we post the superintendent contract, and then we have a public hearing in which we are able to hear comments on the proposed superintendent contract. So, that's what this portion of the meeting is. Are there any questions or comments on that? And I'm sure in a minute they'll bring it up. There we go. So, are there any? So, Mr. France, is this just the time that I invite public comment?
Yes.
So, if there's any public comment on the superintendent contract, you're welcome to take the mic and offer your comment. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, it's a really great question that I've asked, too. We're actually, it's two separate, well, they're not, it's two portions of the meeting. So, after the superintendent hearing, contract hearing, we'll close this meeting, and then we'll ask for public comments on agenda items for our regular board meeting. So, not quite yet. This one is for contract, the superintendent contract. Yes.
Mary Earl, actually, the contract is pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot of questions, but I did couple. The 25 days, you talk about vacation, does that include the 10 days of federal holidays?
That's in addition to those.
So, actually, it's for, they would have 35 days off paid, right? And what exactly is the $7,000 professional development for? I know it standard to pay for association fees. What else would that cover?
It would cover if she wanted to, if the superintendent wanted to go to a conference or use that money to allow other people to go to conferences.
Okay. And it talked about mileage, is that just business mileage? It's not like commuting if they do not choose to move here?
Yeah, I don't believe you usually pay mileage for somebody to drive to work.
Okay. I didn't think so either, but wanted to clarify. And the only other question I had, is this insurance, is that going to be our school insurance, or would they be receiving that part as a cash?
Mr. France, is school insurance?
I believe so, yeah.
School insurance.
That was my question, it's actually, like I said, it's a pretty straightforward contract. So, and the base pay is right in there for what the state's paying, so there's no question on that, thank you.
Are there any other comments? Are there any comments or questions from the board members regarding the contract? All right, and then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And now, we're going to open, we're going to transfer back to our regular board meeting agenda. I'm under call to order, letter C. Are there consideration of agenda additions or deletions?
Yes. Under deletion, under letter E, the presentation by work-based learning, that will not occur this evening. We'll have them come back another time, they had some conflicts. And then, I also have an addition for personnel under Manchester Junior Senior High School employment. Dave McKee has been a volunteer assistant junior high soccer coach. This year, their numbers were outstanding, I believe they had 40 students, coed students come out for junior high soccer, which in our ECA schedule then allows them to have a paid assistant coach. So, what that would do is it would pay Dave McKee monetary, the ECA stipend for that amount when he's been a volunteer, because they didn't reach those numbers in the past. So, it would just make him a paid assistant.
Anything else? All right, public comments on agenda items only.
Hi, my name's James Elliott, I live here in North Manchester. My eight-year-old son is a second grader with MCS, having a great year so far. First of all, I want to say thank you to you on the board for being who you are and doing what you're doing, we do appreciate it in the community. In addition to your board, I understand has come open, I'm here tonight to voice my support for a potential candidate to fill that position, that's Michael Dixon. I have come to know Michael here for the last couple of years through friends of friends, and I can speak to his character, his trustworthiness, his comradinal approach to life in general and every conversation. He tends to bring what I feel is a perfect balance of intelligence, education, and just personality traits that match any board, much less having him fortunately be interested in a school board, that's an ideal position for him. He's got two kids in the district, I find that important, I like the idea that he's invested that way. I find it very interesting that Michael and I sort of arrived in town here around the same time, we were both newbies somewhat to North Manchester, but he's jumped right in to this community, and I'm excited to have that kind of fresh, new blood approach to the town, and I'm glad to be here among people like Michael as a neighbor, and hopefully as a board member. And I do hope you folks will consider him very carefully, because I think he's a great man for the job. That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on the agenda items only? Right, then consent items, Mr. Michael.
Yes, we, as always, we have several things. First of all, we have the minutes of the past sessions, we have the public work session, we have a school board meeting, last school board meeting, executive sessions on the 16th, the 18th, and we did cancel the exec session on April 22nd. We also have the claims, the regular claims, prepaid claims, and then the payroll claims. Grants, we had a couple grants from the foundation, Community Foundation of Wall Bash. One is for the elementary, an outdoor learning lab, and that was an amount of $1,950. Also, the foundation of Wall Bash donated to the Manchester High School, the amount of $4,000, and that was involved with three endowments, that reflects that. Donations, we've had several, you can see we had $12.05 to the Manchester High School for the Squire Team Production Service Film Club, that's from various donors. And then, the FFA came in on some very good money, you will see two through 10, and also 12, total up to $1,650 for our FFA from anonymous donors, BIPPA State Bank, First Farmers Bank and Trust, Jay and Sharon Heckelman, Metzger Landscaping, Southview Farms Incorporated, Quality Hardwood Products, Pumpkin Post, Cowen Tenet, Tim Adams State Farm Insurance, and the Lambert Auto Repair Service. And also, we had a $50 going to our eighth grade Chicago trip, and that was from an anonymous donor. Recommendations, we have Kristen Buck, third grade remediation, that was a resignation. Kendall Tomlinson, kindergarten teacher, effective, and that's a resignation. Kristen Roth, kindergarten teacher, effective, April 29th, and Angelica Goljay, second grade teacher, that was effective at the end of the school year. Employment, we have Randy Meyer, I read remediation, summer school teacher, and Amy Lambert, fourth through sixth grade remediation for the summer. High school employment, Matt Carver, head boys tennis coach, Taylor Ashman, high school assistant track coach, Tiffany Flora, summer school Apex, Jeff Huber, summer school band, Gwen Mize, FFA, Dave McKee, assistant junior high soccer. And then, we had some resignations, Amanda Tous, high school assistant track coach, Julie Beck, seventh grade volleyball coach, Calvin Sellers, high school boys tennis coach, and we had a request for leave of absence, and that was Nancy Smith. So, those are the, I recommend that we approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a motion?
So, I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Flack, and a second by Mr. Hensley, is there any discussion?
I think Kristen Buck, third grade remediation, stated as a resignation, it's actually employment?
It's actually employment, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. On new business, Mr. Miller, approval of new technology devices for 2019 and 2020.
All right, good evening, I'm going to sneak actually one other preview before I do the device, and I kind of wanted to talk about this now, before we talk about the devices, to let you know that we're making some enhancements to our device security. We're going to talk about this more in detail probably in July, as we fill in a few more of the holes that we're doing. But, what we do want to do, all the time, we're looking at how we can improve that device security, and this summer, we're taking some very specific steps, and it's kind of a four-pronged approach that we're looking at. One is, we're going to be looking at the device, we're going to add some software tools to improve our email and Google Docs and Drive scanning, and it's going to be checking for things like bullying, self-harm, and nudity, and when those occur, then we'll be emailed, and then we can forward that information on to the principals as it comes up. We're going to be working with the students more, and we feel that the more we make them aware of what we're capable of monitoring and filtering, hopefully, they'll make different decisions. A little knowledge will hopefully be helpful for them in that case. What we're going to be making some big strides are for parents, and we're going to provide some educational opportunities that will include at-home strategies, what can you do at home to protect your children, okay? There's several things, we handed out a brochure at parent-teacher conference, it's kind of the start, but we're going to enhance that and bring people in and have those conversations. Also, making them aware of what we're filtering and how we're monitoring our students, okay? Most importantly, we're going to be offering a parent portal slash app that will send them weekly email reports of what, where their students have been on their device, okay? What websites they've been to, both here at school and at home, so they're aware, they'll be aware of the searches that they've been doing. Now, if any of those get flagged, if they went to an inappropriate website or did an inappropriate search, the parent will get a notification on their app right away, okay? Letting them know that that happened. And then, off-campus rules, where the parents will be able to, when they're at home or not here on our network, they'll be able to block more sites than what we currently employ. So, you got somebody that's really obsessed with, say, the Game of Thrones, or parents engrossed in Game of Thrones, right? You could block a site specifically geared towards that. So, those will be some changes we'll be offering parents, and there'll be some educational opportunities where we'll sit down and walk the parents through that app. One of the others is for teachers, we're going to add some software tools for classroom monitoring and control of student usage, they'll be able to block four students into a specific website, they'll be able to block a student if, let's say, they're doing a test on Indiana social studies or Indiana history, they could block that website that they've been using, and students won't be able to go out there and use that. Training for better classroom awareness and monitoring, and then, again, just better awareness of what our tools offer that we currently have and what we do with those. We feel that we did offer that a few years ago, and it's time to give that update and bring them into the loop, so. Any questions on that? Like I said, it's kind of a preview, we've set, Jeremy set money to the side so that we can purchase these applications, and those will be in place this summer on that.
So, okay, so I want to understand, so, when the child gets the computer, who sets the filter then?
So, we purchase a filtering application, right? And these are education-based companies that we deal with, so they set a baseline, okay? So, there's times then that we, I don't think I can think of a time where I've opened up something that they have blocked, but I've been more restricted than what they have been. For, again, game sites and things like that primarily, as we all know, that internet is changing, it's a living product, and so trying to keep up with it is difficult. And so, yeah, we generally tighten things down rather than loosening them up. But, again, being that they're education-based companies, they set some standards on what we can get, what we allow students to have access to. And again, we have the chance to tweak that, but it's a good place to start, too many websites otherwise, right? Other questions?
The, you say "we" a couple times, and there's opportunity, and maybe this question's premature, are you going to have like a meeting in the auditorium or something? Is this going to be onsite training for the parents on how this thing operates? Same thing with the teachers, is that going to be something in their in-service day, or details to be worked out?
Yes, specific details have not been worked out, but I envision, yes, we'll invite the parents in here. I think we'll also be able to provide opportunities for them to go out to our website and do refresher training if they need to, so, yep. Tony talked about that, but I don't remember all the specifics, they can go out, and it will be the same for the teachers and staff to...
Yeah, I just want to, be critical training for some of the parents, because if they're trying to do e-learning at home, and there's nobody around, and this thing has a glitch, you know, and their kid gets locked out of someplace they're supposed to be, but...
I don't think that'll be the case as much as just, we want to train them on what to work with on their students so that they can be safe when they're using the device, but that is a possibility too. Other questions?
Two things, Tony.
Yeah, Mike?
So, these third-party softwares, do they have access to the student information? My first question. Secondly, if there's some type of disciplinary action to go onto these websites, is that pre-established?
As far as personal information, they get an email address, and that's it?
What about the third-party companies? You know how it is.
They get, they get an email address, and they're not allowed to contact...
Student data is not used in any third-party way? Okay, how about the disciplinary process?
Some of that is in the handbooks, the student handbooks, I would say at times, because not everything is same every time, sometimes it has to be creative. John, you can correct me if I'm getting up that too far.
Will it need updated with this, with these changes that you're doing, or?
I don't know that it's, the device would make it obsolete, but it's, we're reviewing the handbook, which we'll bring you out to you in June, is our first date to bring you back to revision, so. Again, I don't know that the device would create that change at this time, but we're reviewing that stuff right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, the plan is to bring the first version in June, first reading, and then the second reading, and potential approval would be in July. That way, you have an opportunity...
As part of that review process, you go to the last meeting?
That way, you'll have an opportunity to make sure that it covers everything that needs to be covered, and we have that discussion, that's the time to bring it up.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Are we one-to-one with the computers, or is there student sharing computers?
In our kindergarten, or I'm sorry, in our elementary building, yes, but in about two minutes, we'll change that, or we'll discuss changing that, I should say.
The plan going forward is one-to-one?
Yes.
So, we won't have any more sharing passwords, or?
Sharing passwords is not an issue, they log into those devices individually when they share. So, sharing is, I'm using it now, I get out of it, you're using it now, you log into it.
Thank you.
Other questions? More details coming up. So, I want to hand this, pass it around, I want it back, Mike. This is a Chromebook that we are proposing to switch to. Currently, at the grades four through 12, we're using a Lenovo N22 Chromebook, we've had those for three years, and now we have put those in 2016. Last year, we added 400 devices to the elementary school, those are Acer Spin 11s, okay? And we've been very happy with those. So, what we're looking to do right moment is replace our Lenovo N21s that are in grades four through 12, and then, we're looking at adding 125 devices to the elementary school, which allow us to be one-to-one, one device for every student. Currently, we're one device for every two students in the elementary school, and the teachers there, under Amy Corus' help, have really grown into using them, and I think the one-to-one is something that they're anxiously waiting for. So, what I'm proposing is, is that we enter a four-year lease with Providence Capital Network for the purpose of purchasing new Chromebooks to refresh our devices and add. Again, we talked about the Acer Spin 511, the difference, main difference between that device and what we're currently using, grades four through 12, is that's a convertible unit, it's a laptop or it's a tablet, okay? So, you fold it over, it's touch, so kids kind of get a, I won't say an iPad, full iPad experience, but they're able to open and close documents, they can hand-write on documents, they're being able to make notes on worksheets and things like that. And that's something that really we missed out when we switched from the Chromebooks, from the iPads, okay? And I think Randy can attest to that really pretty well, that our math and science teachers who used a lot of worksheets, they lost out on being able to hand out homework that way, so we think we're going to be able to help them out better with that. The Acer Spin 11 is about 140% faster than our current device that we are using, grades four through 12. So, again, as I said, we're going to, we're proposing at least 1,290 Chromebooks, Google Management licenses, and an extended warranty that will repair the device for four years, okay? Unlimited repairs, drops, accidents, the only thing it won't cover is loss or theft or intentional malicious damage. Kid throws it, they're going to pay for it, right? That's only appropriate, I believe. So, the numbers come down to, for four years, 1,290 Chromebooks, license, and extended warranty, $532,948.10. The annual textbook rental fee for grades four through 12 would increase from $100 to $113 per year for the life of the device, and that will cover the cost of the device, the licensing, and the warranty for those four years, so none of that money will be taken out of capital funds. Just to let you know, when that's, we're currently at $100 per device for the last three years, but before that, when we were iPads, we had $100 for the device, and then we charged $30 for insurance in case they broke the device, and then, parents still had to pay a deductible on top of that. So, many parents were getting charged $65 for replacing the glass multiple times a year, okay? So, it was quite expensive. We're going to pay $113, and again, unless it was malicious, that's all, all right? Grades three will have, which is where we would put the new devices at, we're proposing a textbook rental charge of $35, and the rest of that will be covered out of CPF, which would be about $10,000, a little less than $10,000 a year, okay? Like we did three years ago, the administration believes that giving these devices to the students at the end of the lease will help them take care of the device, and so, we'll recommend that, make that same recommendation in four years. So, what questions can I answer for you at this time?
These have serial numbers on it, I'm making the assumption that each serial number is assigned to a student?
Yes.
Is there a permanent tag put on it with the student's name on it?
Yes. Other questions? No?
I have one, but not for you.
Okay.
Do we have money for this?
Yeah, it would be, it would be covered through the TBR, the textbook rental fees, so, over the life of the four years of it, and the $113 will help cover the cost of those.
So, again, my proposal is to enter into a four-year lease agreement with Providence Capital Network for the purpose of purchasing new Chromebooks to refresh our current three-year-old fleet, and a new model Chromebook, with a new model Chromebook, and to increase the number of total devices at Manchester Elementary for a true one-to-one program. And that would not be take-home the first year, okay? Except for maybe e-learning, otherwise, it would be state school.
So, junior or senior, do they keep their Chromebook, or will that go back into recycling?
It comes back around, we will use those in the fourth grade until the life of the lease is up.
In fourth grade or in third grade?
Pardon?
In fourth grade or in third grade?
Because the devices at third grade will be staying there initially anyhow, will come back to the fourth grade.
I understand, thanks.
Yep.
And these have already been tested, right, Tony?
Yep. We've been using the down version of that, the Acer Spin 11, at the elementary school, again, all year, we've had good success with them. I think they've been very reliable and durable in their use, we've had a few keys pop off, I think we've had two broken screens all year, so that's pretty good, and so, this is just an updated, faster process of version.
Does the $113 cover the case? Because the Chromebook's issue...
So, no, that's a good question, Bryce. Because it's not part of the lease, I didn't actually bring it up, but what we'll be doing is putting these into a sleeve, it's kind of hard to see mine here, but it runs around the edges, and it has a polycarbonate clear top on it, will allow the students to decorate that within school-appropriate stickers if they choose to, we'll ask them to keep the bottom clear because of vent, but we'll also put our tags down there. We'll ask them to keep the bottom clear because of vent, but we'll also put our tags down there. And because the reason, couple reasons we went with the shell, we feel that it gives it real good protection as far as compared to the bag. Because if they want to use it, as a couple of you were doing, taking that device and opening it up all the way, they're gonna be pulling it out of the bag every time, right, to be able to do that. But with this on, it's protected when it's out of the bag and folded over. Okay, so what we'll be doing is charging twenty-five dollars at the initial. And the students get to keep that shell as long as they're in our school system. If they lose it, break it, then they'll pay another twenty-five dollars for that, just as we've done for the cases. But we can't really throw cases into the, or shells into the textbook rental.
So the student will check it in and check it out per school year? They don't keep it over the summer?
That decision's yet to be made. A lot of the surrounding schools are sending the devices home over the summer. We haven't went down that trail yet, but I think that's something we'll be discussing over this next school year.
I believe that we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, you'll agree.
I'll second it.
Great, so there's been a motion by Mr. Hensley and a second by Mr. Turflinger. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Last, what are we gonna do with the ones we have now, right? So Steve could probably remembers this, back in April of 2016, we had this discussion. When we talked about the Chromebooks that we currently have, one of the things that Dr. Reit, Scott Bumgarner and myself talked about is encouraging these students to take care of their device. And we felt at that point in time, those that would be here at the end of the school year, when our lease was up, would get to take those devices home. And so I think it's time that we honor that, since that's what we publicly stated. So I would ask that the board declare the Lenovo Chromebooks as surplus devices that with the primary intention of giving the devices over to students that are in grades four through 12, both enrolled at the end of, at the end of school and in good financial standing with our school system at that point in time. I think it's important that they're here through the end of, of the school year. And I think it's also if they're financially, if they owe us some money, then they can take care of that before they get their devices. Now, we will give parents an opportunity. We'll send a letter out letting them know that these devices will be the students, but they have an opportunity to opt out of their student getting that device if they choose to. We know that there's some people who would rather not have those, so we will offer that. So again, that's my recommendation.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Turflinger. Is there a second?
For declaring the old ones surplus so that they can give them to the kids.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
And a second by Mr. Espisat. Is there a discussion?
I'll just, on the license, are those perpetual then?
So with the Chromebooks, it's a unique situation. What, the way Google operates that is they, when you buy the license, in our case, it's for managing of the device. And they promise to keep that license available and keep the device updated for five years from the initial release of that device. And so these Chromebooks should have two more years before Google stops updating them. The new units will have five years from this year. Time to answer your question?
Other discussion? So there's been a motion to approve the current devices as surplus technology by Mr. Turflinger and a second by Mr. Espisat. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Miller, thanks for all your time and your clear explanations. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Michael.
Next on the agenda is the first reading for a new policy or revision, basically. And you will see it's titled 4010 and it's on homeless students. And you received a copy of the old version and then you also received a copy that we're suggesting or recommending. And this is along with some recent guidance from the ISBA as far as their legal team is concerned. We have about 15 students in our district that are classified as homeless. And it has the definition of what a homeless student is. We do have a liaison person within our district that's been assigned to be their advocate throughout the school year and the time that they're at Manchester Community Schools. So I bring that to you for the first reading. And here again, it will come back in June for a second reading and any discussion or changes or adjustments.
Thank you.
So do I have to promote?
No, we just need first reading, that's all.
Okay.
There's no way I should know that type of thing.
Okay. So you're waiting for me to do something?
I guess, are there any questions? I guess the opportunity from now till the next board meeting or even before, give us a call. If there's something that you noticed or changed or that type of thing, let us know and we'll.
Is that in the packet then? I guess I'm a little lost here.
It, it's deep in the packet. I had a hard time finding it too.
But I'd just like to say thank you. We've had the, had the opportunity to work with one of our, one of our homeless students. They face unique challenges, as do the, as do the, the children in our school system that, that aren't English fluent, you know? So I think any, you know, that's a special subset of our, our students to me that I think we should do everything we can for, so. Very unique challenges that they face, so thank you.
And I think if you look at it, they're just clearing up some things like responsibility. You know, what corporation's responsible? What choices do they have? Does it have to be the home corporation or it could be another corporation? Who takes on the cost of responsibility? Who transports? All that's really cleaned up.
Man, I'd like to commend, you know, a couple of gentlemen over there saying that the things that they do for, for those, those kids, you know, facing those challenges, so. In the school system currently, so.
Mr. Michael?
Yeah, I'd like to present to you for a policy. Again, this is a first reading as well. As you know, when we have e-learning days, we have classified staff such as bus drivers, cooks, instructional aides, secretaries, some of our technology staff that do not get paid on those days because we are not in school. In the past, as you can see up there, in 2015, 2016, MCS closed three days. All were made up because this was prior to e-learning being involved in our school district. In 2016 and 2017, we closed three days total that year. All were made up because we didn't have e-learning. So all of those staff members, bus drivers, they've, they were able to get those days back to them and get their pay. Last year, 2017, 2018, MCS closed five days. Two of those were made up in a, because they were built into our calendar. Three of those days were e-learning days, so those staff members missed out on three days of pay. In 2018, 2019, our current school year, which we don't want to go back and relive, we have closed 10 days this year altogether due to inclement weather. One of those days will be made up, actually was made up last Friday, cause it was built into our calendar. Seven of those days were e-learning days and the state waived two of those days because of the time where we missed so many days in a row, the state put out a waiver. So had we not got those two days waived, we probably would have had two additional e-learning days, which would have made it nine e-learning days and nine days of lost pay for our bus drivers, secretaries, those staff members that are classified. So over the last two years, they've lost out on 12 days of pay. Three last year and essentially would have been nine this year, but the state waived two. So that's where we're at. I'm proposing, on an average, we missed 3.6 days of school due to weather-related events over the previous three years, if you take this year out. So we know that it was a lot higher this year and that's not typically the norm. I would propose that we come up and with a policy, and my policy proposal is that we would pay those classified staff members for half of those missed e-learning days. So for example, if we miss four days of school and they're e-learning days, we would pay them for two of the four days that, that were missed. If we miss five days of school, then that would be two and a half days of pay. I, I propose we round that up and just give them three days of pay instead of two and a half. And I would propose that we would, I would bring this back at the June meeting as well for other clarification and then that we would retro-pay the classified staff for four e-learning days this last school year, which would fall on the dates of January 29th, 30th, 31st and February 1st, where we missed those four days in a row due to bad weather. So again, first reading of my proposal.
Questions or comments?
And June, could you maybe quantify that? I mean, it's per unit cost or in days, but maybe what's the max the school system would see? I mean, I'm for it, but.
Sure.
You know, what's the max would see and, and men at certain levels or something like that?
And they would be paid at their, their daily regular rate for their position is what that would be.
But like a total compensation number maybe or something?
Yeah, yeah, we can work on that.
And my understanding is that pay is already factored into the budget.
Some of that's factored into the budget, yeah. So you, those funds would be there. You know, and various schools are doing a lot of different things as we've reached out to them. Some are not paying e-learning days at all. Some are putting like professional development with it, where they have to watch some type of training video and those type of things. And each school's kind of all over the place. Some schools are, are telling them that they can take the day, but they have to use it as a sick day to get the pay. I'm not a proponent of that and don't feel we should do that. So this is my current proposal. And again, we could adopt this and then it doesn't mean we can't tweak it as we go along throughout the years and, and get better gauge on where this stands.
So if it's a missed day and it's an e-learning day, they get a half a day's pay?
They would get the total number at the end of the year. So if we had five e-learning days altogether for the school year, we would go back and retro-pay for two and a half, round up, make it three days.
So if we missed six, we're still only paying three?
We're, we're paying three. Just information for you to consider till the June meeting.
Jimmy, would you tell me the thought between, behind the, the pain for half instead of just paying it all?
Yeah, I thought if, well, I guess I don't have a real good reason other than I thought this would be a good starting point that we could start at and then we can obviously tweak as we go along.
Part of the issue is if we didn't have a policy, it would be classified as like ghost employment. We're paying people for the work that they have not done. But in interpretation with the ISBA legal staff, they said if you have a policy in your book, then you can, you can go ahead and pay them. So that's the reason we're bringing it. And I'll be honest with you, it's hard to find bus drivers. It's hard to find good par professionals. And I think whenever we have an opportunity to make their day, I think we ought to do that. And I think this is one of those opportunities.
Just curiosity, like the cooks, what time do they get here to start cooking?
Becky?
It really, really depends. I, I just assumed we didn't have any starting schedule. It really messes it up. They, the first ones arrive anywhere between about 5:30 and seven in the morning.
Okay, so they've, they've already got part of their day in for the time school is called a lot of times.
No, they don't. That means when I get the call from Iga Jean at 5:30 in the morning from five o'clock, and I'm already, I'm, I'm watching the weather constantly in the winter time. So I'm constantly telling them, hey, you can't stay home until I call them. I don't want you out on the roads if they're really bad and I don't want you to turn around and have to go back. And so it's, it's a flood of phone calls, text messaging, emails, everything that's out in the neighborhood.
And, and I'm sure the bus drivers are up cleaning the bus off and, and all of that, so.
Yeah, they're preparing.
I don't have a problem with this.
Well, a root point, maybe Jeremy, take a look at like up to a certain level of days, like five days, pay them four and then maybe. But I mean, if it's budgeted, looking at that overall cost of it or something, I mean, maybe that's something to think about, so.
Sure. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
I just, I just really want to highlight that you're, like, that you thought of this and that you did it in the forethinking, so thank you. I just think it goes back to showing how much we care about people in school. And so thank you for doing that and we'll expect to see the next reading and approval next month, right?
Yeah, that will be asking for.
Dr. Lippi, you're up next for a while.
Actually, I think, okay.
Get comfy.
Well, okay, so we got an approval of a rock climbing wall. And so last month, we kind of provided some background information and heard from Gabriel Case, who just did a magnificent job kind of on the fly. Gabe wasn't able to make it tonight, but we're gonna bring this back to you to, for consideration. We've got Mr. Bernmerth, who's kind of taken a little bit of the bull by the horns along with Mrs. Case is here as well, so. Over to Mr. Bernmerth.
Yeah, we would just love your approval for this rock wall competition. It's an inaugural event this year at Southwood. What I passed out to you is the, is the waivers that Southwood High School has provided for us. And you can see that safety is concerned, a big concern here. But there are two practices. One is tomorrow, one is on Friday, and then the big competition is on Saturday morning. At this point, we have been publicizing it, seeing if there was interest in the school and there, and there is. And we have Gabriel, I know is really interested and has gotten a few of his friends to also say that they were interested too. So we're, we're looking for your approval for this competition. It's hopefully going to be an annual event with all of the area schools. And so the idea is that we'll go to Southwood, have a lot of fun and get kids who are interested in a different kind of sport. I think that's what I'm interested in is, you know, is attracting some students that, you know, may not want to play a lot of the traditional kinds of sports. And, and to get them outside and get them active and to participate in something new and fun. And hopefully it'll be a long tradition. Any questions?
Is this a one-time event?
This is a one-time event, right? So this is the inaugural event. Originally, these two individuals, Sean and Abby Unger, built this giant climb, 46-foot climbing wall. And, and for, for one reason or the other, they decided to move it from their property and donate it to Southwood High School. And so the individual there, Sean Unger, has said that we'll start this kind of this competition and get area schools to kind of come out, climb the wall, and hopefully it will be an annual event. So the practice, two practices this week and then the Saturday morning will be the first event. And that's the only time.
And do you have a 10-member team like they asked for?
No, at this point, we have a, a total of three people that are really committed. We would love to have more. I think that at this point, the folks at Southwood just want anyone to be able to come and show up. We have three young men, we're trying to recruit more and, and hopefully, I see this as kind of a building here, something that the kids will get excited about, hear about, see some pictures. Our squire team, production service film crew wants to go and film it. So if, if we get permission to go, they'll go with us, do some filming, do some promotion. And hopefully, it will be an annual event and we'll get, build up more students next, next year.
Okay, so are you still gonna need a bus since there's only?
Yes, we'll need a, well, just a mini bus. So we'll take a mini bus. There won't be more than 15 people going at that time. The film production crew is just a few students. The film production crew is just a few students. So I would drive the minibus and, just for all those three days.
Jayden, safety wise?
The cost is?
Well, the cost is $50 a student, but we're asking students to just pay $10. We're going to find, get creative ways to find some money. We've talked about, yeah, an activity fund from the high school, maybe some personal contributions, some fundraising. But at this point, we're only asking kids to pay $10 because we just want kids to get out there and have a good time. We don't want cost to be something that's prohibitive.
Are you asking the board for any? I thought I read in the packet somewhere.
At one point, we were asking $400 for school funds. If you would love to give us some money, that would be awesome. But if that's a deal breaker, we're not tied to that by any means.
So you have three stu-, I'm trying to get to who, what, why, where, and when here.
Sure.
You're going to drive the bus, you've got three students, you've got the film crew going, and you want to use our bus.
Yes, correct.
That's the grand total of what you want from the board?
Yes, and I think just more of, we wanted to make you aware because of, it's a different kind of event. It's not like, you know, we're just going out hiking in the woods. When you add rock climbing to this, there's a little bit of a fear factor there. We didn't want to throw any surprises out there. We wanted you to be more aware than anything else.
Is our approval or not approval, so if we approve it tonight, you just automatically have a team for the next year and you wouldn't have to come back for approval? Is that your hope?
That's our hope, yes.
And this would be considered a club sport then? Is that technically what it is?
It would be a club, but right now the sponsor volunteer. Jayden stepped away, and we'd have to come back and ask for an additional stipend, which we're not doing that.
How is the safety handled, Jayden? Is there outside companies coming and doing this, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'll just read this right off of my notes here. Of course, safety is the absolute top priority. The established procedures for Unger Mountain is what they're calling it. The insurance company standards and the standards of builder, which is called Ex-Brontial Systems located south Chicago. They provide staff, operational trainings, annual technician inspections, and a review of the previous year's paperwork to determine the tower is being run safely and correctly. The auto place, we're just inspecting this past winter in Lower Colorado.
So, go ahead. So they wear safety straps?
Yes, correct, yes. Everyone will wear harness, helmets. There's an auto belay system, so, yeah, safety is the number one concern there for sure.
And I got to tell you, I absolutely love it. Anything to get the kids off their phone and out doing something physical. And especially, I just finished a class down at Heartland with kids from six different school corporations working together and completed a nice project in a manufacturing facility in Wabash. Anything we can do to get collaboration between these kids and the school system all four. So thank you for volunteering to do this. And Gabriel's not here tonight, but, yeah, I wanted to talk to him a little more last time. But he did an excellent job, and it's neat to see those kids have a vision, right? Put a plan together and kind of go after it. So there may only be three, but have you guys talked to like Parker Bocamp in Wabash, any?
We haven't, but, you know, we're all kind of new at this. This is our first year, we're very excited about that opportunity.
He's a big climber, right? So you may want to have him talk to the kids, he's a pretty cool guy, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Are these students all minors or are they, have they reached 18?
Yes, they're all under 18, correct, yes. So they would be getting their parent permission to go for this, yes.
And we contacted our insurance and they're fine with it, so.
Yeah. Well, I know in high school, I signed my dad's name better than he did. That's my only concern. If you would witness a parent's signature, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Well, thank you, yeah. Luckily, all three of the students that are involved are, I have had direct contact with their parents. In fact, one of the mothers has been asking me, hey, what's going on with this? So I'm ready to go. So we have direct contact with all the students that are involved at this point.
Well, with all the information gathered, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Turflinger, is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Hensley, is there more discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our girls' basketball overnight camp. I'm not sure if we have our slide here or not, but here's what it is. So each year at this time of the school year, we get into basketball camp time. And this one here in particular is an overnight camp. And so we're asking for your approval. I believe it's Jake Everett, yeah, Jake Everett is asking for our approval to take his kids on a team bonding overnight camp. The dates are up there, May 28th, May 30th after school gets out. And this is something I believe they did last year as well, I don't believe this is the first year. So I get, we'll just take these one at a time, I'm assuming, so I'm asking for that approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Becky?
So there's been a motion by Mr. Espisette and a second by Mr. Flack. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
All right, and another amazing part of this time of year is the summer athletic youth camps. And so we've got all kinds of camps going on this summer. And so, again, this is an annual request that we bring you through the athletic department. And I'm not sure if it lists any of these, a tennis camp, a basketball camp, and just about every camp you can imagine. So those are something we do annually, and so we're asking your approval to proceed with those camps as we do annually. There they are, yep, soccer, basketball, volleyball.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Flack and a second by Mr. Espisette to approve the summer athletic youth camps. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six zero.
And also, what would summer be if we didn't offer a marching band camp? And so by the request of Mr. Jeff Huber, we're requesting that we run these, the camps here that you see, the dates. Again, I don't know if there's many changes for this, it's pretty traditional, Jeff, yeah. So pretty standard from what we've offered in the past, and looking for your approval on band camp this summer.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's a motion by Mr. Hensley.
Second.
I don't know who's second. Okay, so a motion by Mr. Hensley and a second by Mr. Flack to approve marching band camp for the summer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Favor? Six zero.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Michael?
Yes, in your packet you will see it's that time of year as far as contract renewal. And you have to think in terms, two different ways. One is contracts, number of years on a contract, and then the salary. And the salary will be negotiated later on in the year along with the teacher negotiation piece. Currently, we have some administrators and central office staff that are on a year contract. And of course, their contract will be up here at the end of this month, so we want to make sure they have another year to look forward to. Then also, we have some that were in the first year of a two-year contract, and I guess in positions that probably higher pressure, more responsibility from that standpoint. And I'm assuming that they went with a two-year contract to send a vote of confidence that you believe in, that they belong in that position and so forth. So I bring that to you. You can see the list of the names and their pay start date as of right now, the number of contracted days, and then the proposal will be filling that second year, starting out, and they move into a first year out of a two-year contract or one year out of a one-year contract.
Is there a motion?
So I have a question. The contract two of two, just to make sure I understand, we're not extending that two-year contract?
No.
We're disagreeing that?
They have two years.
Okay.
Two-year contract.
And then all the one-on-ones, we're giving them a new contract.
Right, we're not rolling anything over, we're just going strictly two out of two.
I make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion by Mr. Turflinger and a second by Mr. Bedkey to approve the administrative director contract renewal. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And Mrs. Landis?
Okay, so, once again, actually, it's a pretty annual event that the USDA requires us to do something called a PLE, which is paid lunch equity. So then in theory, what that is, is that the monies that the USDA reimburses us for a free student's lunch, and the same thing with a reduced student's lunch, that technically, we should not be pulling money from them to supplement our paid students. For every paid student that comes through and buys purchases of lunch from us, we do receive, this year we received 31 cents for that. So they have a formula where we have 31 cents plus our commodity value plus our six- cent certification to the current lunch, and supposedly that should technically equal the free and reduced reimbursement that we get from the USDA. So, so that we meet that, because we do not, we never have, and they always up the reimbursement typically about five cents every year, they have at least as long as I've been here. I don't know that we'll ever get there. So, but we are supposed to raise our lunch prices. I have a script sheet that I have to fill out and that I send to the state every year with the renewal of our sponsorship contract. And they cap that out. It says that we must raise our lunch prices more than 10 cents. They tell us we only have to raise lunch prices 10 cents. And so that's our cap. So that is what I'm asking for this year, is 10 cents across the board for every paid lunch. So that would increase our lunch prices. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So a motion by Mr. Flack, a second.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Bedkey, is there any discussion or questions for Ms. Landis? Okay, then, all those in favor? Opposed? Are you in favor? A motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael?
Yes, next is the roofing project. You had in your packet two bids, I asked Jack to secure those. And I just want the board to be aware of, I'll be doing a presentation on a preliminary project for the safety and security, and I want you to know this will be a part of that presentation or a piece of that. So keep that in mind as you discuss this.
I guess Robert's rules would say there's a motion and then a second and discussion, or? Or do you have any questions or discussion? Robert's, yeah. But do you have any questions, discussion? Thanks for Mr. Michael.
You said it is going to be included in that conversation?
Yes.
Okay.
Be honest with you, my recommendation is we not vote on this tonight because if we're talking about money, just found out that we now only have one boiler, but we have two boilers that probably need to be replaced. And I think if we get a pretty good feel as far as what that preliminary project would look like, along with the roof and the two boilers, then I think we can bring the financial gurus in and help us figure out how, what are our options as far as financing this whole deal. And I guess that's the direction I would like to see it go. But here again, I was asked to put it on the agenda, and here it is.
Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
How much is in the capital building fund?
Our capital projects that we were approved for totaled 1.881 million. We budgeted 372,000 for construction slash improvement to buildings. So that would be the amount that we would be looking at working with, the 372,000 for that. Now, as we take a look at that 1.8 million, 800,000 of that has to go back for our tax anticipation warrant that we took out for cash flow. So those monies will be gone. You're looking at another 110,000 that we pay for property and casualty insurance, 111,000 for utilities. We have technology costs that are part of CPF, so you're looking around 300 to 350,000 there. So by the time you take those amounts and take it away from your 1.8 million, it leaves you about 560,000 in CPF. And that doesn't include monies that we still have to spend for, maintenance repair of equipment, yearly maintenance agreements, other things that we may want to do like repaving parking lots and those type of things. So it's a tough stretch to pay for the roof out of CPF without planning a few years in advance for that, with the quotes that we have at least, especially if we want to do a total tear-off.
Mr. Miller? Could you call up the minutes from the March 2018 board meeting? While he's doing that, so you can all see it, I have a printed copy here. Under safety and construction, Mr. Baumgartner reported to the board members that we need to keep up on maintenance on our current facilities. A new roof will be needed at the junior high administration building in the next couple of years. MIS and MEM will be needing new boilers, they're 20 years old now, which that's incorrect. MIS is in need of a new parking lot this summer. These projects could fall into our CPF fund and not have to borrow the money. And then he went on to talk about safety things right after that, it's item number nine when you get into it. And then the Barton Cove Vilma that was done in July 2017, the community foundation grant, identified the boilers, the roof, the overcrowding at the cafeteria. And that facility audit was done at all the school buildings in Wabash County. And it was delivered to the superintendent of schools and the president of every school board for each district. I'm saying, you're looking at these things over the top of my head. I think they rank ahead of new buses, I think it ranks ahead of parking lots. This isn't a building that we store equipment in or animals in. Our loved ones work in this building, our community members work in this building. If the water's gotten this far through the roof, through the steel plating, I really think that we need to figure out whether we need to borrow some money and use the CBF money that's available to make the payments on that until the 2019, '20 budget, to get the worst areas. I reached out to these folks that did the estimates. If we notify them by June 1st that we want to move on a roof project, one of them can have it done by November 15th. The other one can only do part of it, but it was explained that the roof on this building is rather unique and makes it pretty easy to do part of the roof this year and part of it next year. So the worst areas could be identified and completed by fall, so we don't have to go through another winter. And then they could come back, we could split the money over two years.
Dave, I'm sorry, you had wrong.
Pardon?
You said March of 2018, and where was that?
Yes, item number nine.
Right there.
Discussion items, number nine. So this roof, I mean, it didn't get bad and it didn't get really, it didn't start leaking just overnight. And it's kind of a health and safety thing, we don't know where this water's going. and it's kind of a health and safety thing. We don't know where this water's going. I mean, that one, that stain right there, that, that could be leaking into a light in the middle of the night, be leaking into our HVAC. Nobody seems to know. I really think the board needs to move on this, and like I said, you know, there's alternatives there with the money. Can split it over two years, get the worst area this year, or use the CBF money to make payments on borrowed money. But I really don't think we need to go through another winter here with the pounding issues. Water weighs eight pounds a gallon. As the, as the roof settles, as the building ages, water gets to collect there, and then it doesn't get to the drains. If you take this down to the deck and start over, they can identify those areas with the settling as they put some extra styrofoam in there, and they reshape the water so it goes to the drains.
Well, and it could, I mean, mold and everything else, Dave, so if that's on the agenda on June eighth, we got, or fourth, June fourth, right, that's a couple of weeks away. I'd like to see us come up with a creative solution, maybe even, I mean, there may be grants out there looking at solar panels, maybe on the roof or something like that, that we could get, you know, get some help in other avenues, you know, on this roof repair. There's other people doing things like that, so I think, you know, it's on the agenda, and it, and it, I'm, I'm kinda with you, it needs addressed, so we've been talking about this, I mean, since I've been on the board, so, and I know it's gotta be a creative solution, you know, so let's, let's come together and just find, you know, the solutions out there.
Sure. I, I don't disagree that we need to get a new roof on the building by any means. I'm not comfortable saying we can do it through CPF funds. That's all I'm saying. I, I wanna make sure we're good stewards of it and we don't put ourselves in a bad position with other things that could come up and not have the money for it. So I'm on board about, yeah, we need to figure out how we can do it, and if that's financing, and then how we have to do that. But yeah, I don't, I don't wanna sit here and say, yeah, CPF will pay for it, and we're gonna spend seven hundred thousand out of CPF and then not have anything when a lawnmower breaks down. So that's where I'm at, personally.
I think the item you put on there covers us tonight, right? We're gonna discuss it on the fourth, and then we got, you know, I think we gotta find a creative solution to, to go after that. I don't think we're solving it tonight, I guess is what I'm saying.
Russ or Jeremy, how did Jack get these bids? Did, did Jack reach out to these companies?
Yes, yes, he did. Yeah, he's got, his, his name's right on them.
Yeah.
Well.
They're good for thirty days, so.
Okay.
We probably have to go back and to the company at some point in time and rebid it, probably.
And the reason for my urgency, so everybody understands, doing this kind of roof isn't something you call Mr. Smith down on the corner to do. These guys were booked all the way through the summer already. I did reach out to Jack and ask him that question, are these guys booked? How much time? He didn't have the answer, and he had a ballgame tonight, so I reached out to these two gentlemen, and they both told me they're pretty well booked through the summer. One of them, like I said, the most expensive one with only a twenty-year warranty. They can, they can get it done, but they're the most expensive. The other one said this roof is in six sections, so whatever we could afford this year, they could come in and do one or two sections. We'd pay for that, and then next year, they come back and do the rest. We'd be the first one on the list for next year. So that's where it's at.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Do we need a motion since it's gonna be talked about on the fourth?
Well, it's, it's on the agenda as an item. My understanding was that.
What would the motion, what would the motion be then?
That it's on that, an item on the fourth?
I know. The motion here, my understa, Mr. Michael, what would the motion be tonight?
I think it's, it, my recommendation is that we would look at it on the fourth, based on the presentation.
I'll make a motion to that.
At that, at that time.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're asking, and do we need a motion for that, to just wait to talk?
Not necessarily.
So we could just decide that we're gonna wait until June fourth? Senator? I, I, it's, it's my fault. I don't know all the ins and outs. Is that okay with everyone? June fourth?
Yep.
Mr. Turflinger, is that okay with you?
The board wants, I'm just trying to give them the information.
All right, so we'll collect that from on June fourth. Thank you very much.
And on the fourth, Dana will be here to go into a little more detail as far as cost and that type of thing, as well as myself.
Will those folks that gave these bids be here?
I haven't invited them yet, no.
Would that be a good idea?
It's up to the board.
Do we need a motion?
Why would you, just a consensus?
It feels to me, and I, I might be out of, out of place, so please correct me, but when I first started, somebody told me, like, things don't move real fast with boards. But that feels to me out of place, so the, the June fourth is, the board had asked administration to look at all the information, what are the needs, and to present with that for us some proposals of what do we need in terms of facility. That was an executive session in February. After we had a major safety report during our regular board meeting, and in executive session, the board asked and requested that administration, as I said, it brings to us a proposal, brings to us a possibility. And that's what that June fourth meeting is, is here's what we, the school sees as needs, and here are the ways that we could address those needs. And so, obviously, I, I've not heard a single person say that the roof is not in need to be addressed, but it feels to me that that's kind of out of sorts. That's, you're bringing a proposal to us, and we're saying, well, let's go ahead and have the contractors here, too. Is that?
I agree.
Is that typical?
No. Well, I don't know if it's typical or not.
Okay.
Well, who makes the decision whether we spend money on this roof or not? The administration, or does the board make an approval of that? What is our responsibility as a trustee of the school board?
Yeah, the board.
Board will make the final decision.
Okay, as long as I, as long as we have the correct information and updated information on June fourth, I'm fine with it. So I'm just saying, you know, there, you can only kick things down the road so far before it costs people more money, and I think that's a role in the school board, to make sure we address these things before the costs continue to escalate. So that's my point to this, so thank you.
When I sent the email and asked to have this on the agenda, I asked for a report on how we could fund it, and I also asked to have Mr. Rupley, which he, you know, he's a baseball coach, he couldn't be here tonight, and to have these contractors here, because personally, I would like to have first-in, firsthand information from the people that are gonna do the work, that can answer the board's questions. You know, we don't have any roofing experts sitting here.
Well, as long as we have the information, I think that's, that's their deal to have that information, so, but.
I would like to see Jack, if he present, or.
He was, he was invited tonight, but he had a baseball game.
That would be great. The contractors, not so much.
Yep.
So we're not using Barton Cove in the deal?
That hasn't been decided yet.
But he was concerned this won't help, this getting higher is the why without.
I think we, we need to listen to the proposal or the preliminary plans and then look at the total package and decide what direction we need to go.
So this will be part of his on June fourth?
Timeline, yes.
Barton Cove?
Yep.
And we have the right as a board to split and cut and base that total package anyway we want.
Exactly.
And so we'll have all the information in front of us, and we can decide at that point what we wanna report on. If it's just the roof, we can do that at that time. We can, we have the flexibility doing whatever we decide to do.
And I did check with Dana as far as the bidding process, and he said if you can get a better price on the roof, go for it. If you can get a better price on technology and the vegetables, go for it. So he, he, he'll work with us on that.
June fourth is a public meeting, right?
Yep.
So we really can't decide anything that night?
Not really. You can give a general consensus.
If it's a special meeting, you can't. If it's a work session, there's no problem. What special meeting can you vote?
Special meeting? Okay.
So is this, are these proposals outside of what Dana's gonna, does he have other roofing proposals?
Yes. His total is a million and twenty dollars.
For the roof? Dana's in?
But you have to understand, he's putting it in the bidding process, so it could come in much lower or it could come in much higher. But we don't have to accept those. We can pick and choose those bids that are, like I say, I, I was kinda curious myself. That's the reason I asked for those bids, 'cause I figured a million dollars, that's a lot of money for a roof. And I did check with Dana as far as the specifications and so forth, and he said that, that's a top-notch roof. He said that's exactly what we would give you. So we might be able to maneuver and manipulate it and make it work for ourselves. But I want everybody to see the whole package, the whole plan, so you kinda see how it all fits. And how you break it up, that is really up to you. And then the last item, there was some question about the audits and that type of thing. I had one lay down, and that was from Dana, and he has put in writing that they will definitely review the commentary from the facility study that was done in two thousand seventeen, and he also indicated that it would not exceed ten thousand dollars unless we hire them as a designer for the project, then that would just be folded into the overall project. So I have that in writing, and then also I included the, with some concern about the bus traffic, and Dana and I had engineer, civic engineer, civil engineer, come in and observe our school traffic and so forth, and you can read what he recommended. He was really impressed with the dismissal process, how it was handled. He did indicate if we start spreading buses out, that just spreads out your supervision responsibility, and he liked the way it was condensed. That way, two or three or four people can see everything, including bus drivers. So he had some good comments, and I wanted to share that information with you as well.
Was he here in the morning?
Afternoon.
Well, part of that, Russ, just so you know where that came from, is if you, if you look out there, unfortunately, you gotta worry about things like this, and so, you know, what I've noticed in, in, the media is part of the problem, I think, and the fact that, you know, you, they continually propagate this stuff, but, you know, we, we talk a lot, you know, on the security realm about shootings and, you know, the guarding against this, stuff like that, and a lot of these people are using vehicles, you know, so, or, you know, I can have a heart attack, or I can go into epileptic seizure, and that, what my concern is, is that, that, to me, when those, and I know they have to get on and off the buses, but when those kids are out there, that's probably one of the more secure or insecure moments of our students, you know, we, you know, we're talking about all this other stuff, and I'll get into that, but that's where I'm coming from on that.
And I took all that into consideration when we sat down with the administrative team. I've listened to a lot of people since I've been here, and I'll be honest with you, I think I've addressed that in my proposal.
Okay, thank you.
I really, and I did share the thought with the engineer, and he said that'd be a great idea.
Awesome. Thank you.
It really hits in exactly what you're talking about as far as safety and, and, you know, somebody has a heart attack and we have a loose vehicle on the parking lot and so forth. I, I feel a lot more comfortable with this. It's just one more step, in my opinion, for safety.
Good. Thank you.
I'd be interested to, to see it, because I've witnessed both, and I can say, without exception, that the afternoon is very, very, very well-run, and the morning is chaos. I really wish they would've saw the activity in the morning, 'cause you've witnessed it, too. It's a lot different in the morning than it is in the afternoon.
Well, we'll, we can talk about that then, on the fourth.
Okay.
Yep. That's all I have.
And we are at administrative updates and reports. Looks like you're coming from Camp Crosley.
I am coming from Camp Crosley, minus a little bit of sunscreen today. We had, we had a great time, I just, real quick report, great time at Camp Crosley with sixth grade yesterday and today. Yesterday was a little bit cold and drizzly, but it didn't affect what we were doing. Today was an absolutely gorgeous day. Wanna thank the teachers, wanna thank the parent volunteers who went along and spent the night in the cabins with them. I stayed up there last night, and the teachers all stayed overnight, so we had, we had a really good time with them. And so I wanna, wanna thank you for allowing us to do that again. It's one of those things that I know a lot of schools have gotten away from. I think it's something really special that we do, and the kids, the kids really, really enjoyed that time, so I wanted to tell you about that. Fifth grade, last week, went to BizTown. What you have is the BizTown newspaper that one of, that the, the newspaper business created that day. They did all the stories, took the pictures, and put that together, so that is in, Junior Achievement is in Fort Wayne. We go over there and spend the day. They spend a lot of time prepping for this, teaching kids how to write checks, run businesses, do all those personal finance things, and then they go over there and do all that. BizTown JA is moving to a new facility for next year. Actually, they're moving here in a couple of weeks, so we're looking forward to that next year, but the kids did a, did a great job with that, so if you wanna look over that, there may be some extras here, if some people in the audience wanna see that. But once again, that was a great time. Fourth grade made the trip to Indianapolis a couple of weeks ago. Once again, that was a very good experience. We, I don't have a, I think I put it in our newsletter, which came to you. Sometimes we stumble into things by accident. We had got, made, we went to the Speedway, then we went to the State House. We had planned to give just a walking tour ourselves. We don't schedule that. We call, call them and tell them we're coming, but it's kinda hard to get a scheduled tour of that. Well, happened to run into the majority floor leader of the house. As I was on one of the elevators, and he asked about our group and was impressed by the behavior of our group and how they were interested in things, and he said, well, you're taking a tour. I said, no, we're just giving the kids a tour ourselves. He said, well, have you been in the house chamber? And I said, no, we haven't. He said, well, if you've got a few minutes, 'cause we were getting ready to leave, if you've got a few minutes, he said, I'd be glad to take you in the house chamber. So he took us in the house chamber. I made an announcement to all the students, okay, when you go in there, don't touch anything. He sends them in and says, hey, everybody find a seat, and they all sat in the legislators' seats, the spinny chairs, the big, and he did a presentation to them. So there's a picture, I think, on the front of the newsletter, if you got that, of the MIS House of Representatives. All of our students were sitting in the house chamber, and so it was a, it was an awesome picture to see. So once again, that was a great experience for, for those students. Things coming up, or actually, things finishing up, we finished I-Learn, well, we finished officially the scheduled part of I-Learn. We have a few makeups to do. We have until Friday to get those done. Testing went very, very well. I will tell you how very, very well it went, once we get our results back, but I will say, very smooth, the way that went. Tony and all the technology staff, it was all done. There were no glitches with that, and, and the kids did really well. It was not a timed test. There were a couple tests that we had students that started at eight-thirty in the morning, and they took a break for lunch, and they were still testing at two. Now, that was not the, that was not a majority. I mean, that was a few students really taking their time, working on that test. So most of those students were done, and the longest test, I think, was about an hour and a half, when a majority of the students were done, and then we had groups of students that took longer than that. But really liked the, the format. We'll, we'll see what the results look like. Coming up, we've got field day next week, followed by our fifth and, fourth and fifth grade awards program next Friday morning, and then our sixth grade graduation will be Friday morning at, it's on the newsletter. I think it's, I think we're doing eight, is it eight-thirty for the awards? Ten for the, ten for the sixth grade graduation. I haven't, I've gotta get myself to that point yet, but if anyone wants to come out there, that's a great time for the, for the sixth grade graduation, and then we wrap things up. So it's been a great year, and it's ending very, very quickly. Any questions? Oh, grandparents' day, thank you. We had four hundred and sixty grandparents on a day that was not raining. It was nice, but it had been raining, so where do you park four hundred and sixty grandparents? You don't park them in the yard. A lot of them park. A lot of them parked here, I'm a gene, made arrangements for buses to transport them out there, worked out really well, got a lot of great comments about Grandparents' Day. And, you know, once again, just a neat, neat opportunity. Once again, why, why do our, why do our schools, you know, why are they such special places? When you've got a school of 380 students, and you get just under 500 grandparents visiting them, that's it right there. The participation of the families, the support of the families, is just a really neat thing. And, and once again, that's something that we want to, we want to continue doing, because, you know, it really, it showcases the school, but it really, the kids love having their grandparents there, and the grandparents love coming to see the kids, so really enjoyed that. The cooks, I forget how many sack lunches, it was seven, how many?
At least 675.
675 sack lunches that day. You know, they, they, they loved me that day. I walked in the day before and said, "Anything going on?" And, yes. So any other questions? I'm going to disappear, the baseball game is three to four, we're down.
Thank you, Randy.
Did Sam get one of them fast?
Did he?
Yeah.
Awesome.
It's kind of like salt on an open wound.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, update good.
Busy time of the month right now, May, we're getting to the end of the school year, just had some, had, had some great events just in the last month. So FFA hosts a success, they're a very successful awards banquet, as they do each and every year, just a tremendous event, that was a few weeks back. Shortly after the banquet, we had a group of soil judging, head out to the Nationals for the first time, just did fantastic. And the nation, we finished fifth in the nation, all those other states, 50 states, and we had a team that finished fifth. And we had an individual, Skylar Michael, who finished fourth as an individual in the nation in Oklahoma. So fantastic job by FFA. I will back up, reiterate what Randy said, I-Learn went really well. We're still kind of putting a bow on that, we've got I-Learn Biology tomorrow, AP testing's going pretty much all through the school day, just different AP tests, trying to get those kids some college credit. Prom happened a couple of weeks ago, had a great prom, after prom went well. I appreciate the, the staff and, and parents who helped put the prom and after prom on together. In athletics, we've had a lot of rain delays and rain outs. Looks like the weather's headed in the right direction, but along the way here, our girls' tennis and girls' track teams, both were able to secure TRC conference titles, and our girls' track team is right now at sectional at Plymouth, and we're, we've got a good team. I mean, that's a team that could make some noise over the sectional, so I can't wait to move out of here and go see how they're doing. And then girls' tennis starts sectional tomorrow at Peru, and they could make noise in sectional. So along with baseball that's going on and, and all the other stuff, great job by athletics. Last night, we had our senior scholarship night. Hundreds of thousands of dollars passed along to our students over their four-year career or college, for their college tuition. Just very blessed to have a community that, such a giving community, that sees the value in, in after high school, post-high school education. And I believe particularly, our county is certainly one of the leaders in the nation as far as that goes and the things they do behind the scenes. So we appreciate the community's support and our, the outstanding effort by our seniors and our staff. Coming up this week, we have a band concert this Friday evening at 8:00 PM in the High School Performing Arts Center. The choir concert will be next Monday, is concluding kind of concerts for the year. The choir concert next Monday is 7:00 PM, also in the Performing Arts Center. I added a little bit thing today, we had our RISE classroom put on there, what's become kind of an annual play, and we want to thank Erica Vogel and her team, and all the efforts they put, just what a source of pride for our school. And we had a lot of visitors come over, we had MIS kids come up and see that, and just really a great way to, to just, you know, give thanks for all the, the special kids that we have. Finally, little reminder, we've got this event called Graduation coming up, May 34, first, 7:30 PM, make sure that's on your calendar in the high school gym. So a busy, fantastic school year is starting to come to an end, and very proud of all of our staff, and our teachers, and our parents, and the community, to put all the efforts into making this a very successful school year. Any questions?
Dr. Lippie. I also want to say Saturday, I have the privilege to, to go to the Special Olympics in Wabash, and they're student athletes. I'll tell you what, the, the pride performance and the, and the, just the, the sharing and the, and the pride in each other, you know, that was, that was awesome stuff, thank you. Great job with the kids.
Very special place, very special. Thank you.
It's poor special, that's the word I was looking for.
Not that I know of.
I apologize for being late ahead to do CPR certification with Mrs. Hire, since it's my year to renew my license. So May is finally here, and I know that Dr. Lippie and Mr. Self did a great job of wrapping up some of the stuff that's been going on. If you were to come to a classroom this month, you would find a really jam-packed schedule, broken up by testing and special events. I know that teachers this year, this time of year, always seem to find at least one subject or another subject, some two or more, that they want to make sure that they cram in before the end of the school year, so try and find time for it somewhere, while also trying to wrap up the year and put a bow on it for students. Many teachers are also already preparing summer packets and summer exercises, materials for students to take home and, and work on over the summer. I do want to make sure MIS has their choir concert this Wednesday, and the MIS bands do their concert on Friday at 6:00 o'clock, just in case anybody gets confused. And then I do want to express my appreciation and thanks to the community. This past week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and Manchester always does a great job with it. And so I would like to especially thank all the community groups, the staff, especially the school secretaries, and administrators for all the things they did this past week. You know, every, every year is something that the community does a good job with, and we really appreciate it. At this time of year, it really helps, it's the end of the year and, and getting very weary, and so we definitely felt appreciated, and thank you for that. I would also like to thank the board for allowing MTA to make some suggestions for the final interview days for the superintendent candidates. You know, we, we would still disagree with the ISBA's view on how final rounds should be conducted, specifically with keeping finalists confidential, but we do appreciate that the board, you know, did include feedback from many different groups as part of that day, and so thank you for that. We have had some really great success in the past several years with hiring administrators and teachers, and I think all positions, because we're always very careful to have an interview, have a process for hiring. That allows the administrators and the lead person to find the best candidates and get teachers and other individuals involved in the, in the interview process to really be able to interview well and find out the, find out about those persons and find the best candidate. And so we, we really appreciate working with the board on that. Finally, I would like to briefly just bring up my appreciation that at Manchester, we have viewed technology as an important tool. The devices approved tonight are, are more than that, and that they allow access to other tools, so they're a very important tool, but they are still only as effective as the instruction provided, the curriculum that's planned, and other tools that are used in conjunction. I know teachers appreciate that we are allowed to put many different tools in our toolbox here at Manchester for students. I'm excited for this next round of devices, because it brings us to touchscreen, which the iPads had, and I know I've missed a great deal. As a music teacher, there's not a key for a quarter note on a Chromebook, but also has a keyboard that students can use to type and learn how to type properly. Anyways, man, to college knows you write a paper at least twice a week, so it's important you learn to, to do that. And so I'm excited for these, these next round of devices to be flexible. I shared briefly at a school board meeting this fall, that this past summer, I was part of a breakout session as part of the NESC Teachers Association with a presence of other smaller school districts. And we talked through several topics before we ended up spending most of the time discussing an issue that about half of the 25 districts in the room were going, were dealing with. And that was that after adopting a device and going one-to-one, their districts had stopped using other tools and investing in other, in curriculum development. Between, you know, it's districts that were similar size and had similar amounts of teachers, there was a very big difference in what options were available for classroom resources. And the districts who had purchased the devices and no longer invested in curriculum and planning, or the purchase of additional resources such as textbooks, or other digital print resources, or other prepared materials, were, were seeing lower test scores, and there's a high level of frustration from the teachers that the associations were hearing, and they're having trouble with low morale and trouble keeping and retaining the best teachers. The districts like Manchester, who were using technology as one important tool, tool box, they were not having those same issues, not even close to the same level. And so while this is far from a definitive study or, or anything like that, it was really striking to me to see that, and made me appreciate that we do have that view at Manchester. And so I appreciate the board's thoroughness in investigating these devices tonight. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Can I make a comment to the Teachers Association real quick? I know it's getting late, but, so, so, you know, some, there's been some discussion about the new requirements for, for teacher license, and not to, not to bring this up, thank you. And I just want to make the comment that, you know, setting through a lot of legislative process right now, you know, there seems to be an adversarial relationship between, you know, ISBA legislators. I think Governor Holton is, is, my personal opinion, is doing a really great job, and it's been 10, 12 years ago now that I actually talked to Brendan Nate at the ISTA about, about incorporating continuous improvement skills and, and training with the teachers. And I hope that that's the push on that, and I, and I, I really hope that the Teachers Association, and the teachers that don't belong to the Teachers Association will embrace some of this, and that we, that, that we could sort of mend these relationships, and not to, you know, you don't have to comment those, anything, I'm making, I'm making a comment to you as the head of the, head of our Teachers Association, is I hope that, that concept will be embraced, you know, and it, and it won't be negative that, that we can use these skill sets to come, come to common agreement and get, and get rid of some of this, this adversarial, you know, look at each other and, you know, whatever people want to say, right? You know, you sit in the meetings and you, and you see it for the sake of the kids, and that's all three parties. That's the legislature, that's the teacher, that's the school boards, and the school board association. So I just want to comment to that, is, you know, I've heard some, some, you know, negative and positive comments to that, but in other industries, we use those skill sets to get better, right? And I think, and I think if, you know, we talk a lot in school about what we do, you know, that, it's like you're saying, so you give them electronic devices, it doesn't matter unless you have the right curriculum, you're using those electronic devices. And in, in those, in that arena, we look at how we do what we do, and it, and it's magic, basically, when you can bring people together and get rid of, get rid of conflict, basically, and look, look for the betterment of these kids and how we spend our money and things like that. So I just want to comment to that. I love what you do, you know, and I, and, and also you're a great band teacher, I've already told you that before, so, you know, thank you.
Mr. Markham, you didn't have anything?
No.
Mr. Michael?
This is my final board meeting. To think back in January that I would be at this point, it has gone rather quickly. I've learned a lot, and I really want to thank the community, I want to thank the staff, I want to thank you as school board members. You guys have been through a lot of change, a lot of things that a lot of boards probably would have crumbled under, so I give you credit on that, and I encourage you to continue to work together, cooperate with each other, and it comes down to what's best for kids. And I had a superintendent that I worked under years ago, and he was one of those that you better have your act together, you better have your plan together, but you know, he'd eat you alive. But the last question, if you went in with any kind of proposal or whatever, his last question is, is that what is best for kids? And if you could answer yes, then your chances of getting whatever you were proposing were pretty good. If you couldn't answer that, you knew you probably shouldn't go in. But anyway, as a board, I wish you well. I, I will remember my experience in North Manchester, it was a good experience all the way around, and I've always said, no districts operate exactly alike. And it intrigues me when I walk into a district to find out this and that, and how things function and so forth. And, you know, I told my wife the other night, you know, I don't miss the budget issues, I don't miss the staffing issues, but I miss people. And you people have played a part of that, and you've made my day, or my six months, or whatever, a, a pleasure. Most days I could go home and feel pretty good, and other, other days, I'm thinking about this, or I'm thinking about that, and contemplating this and contemplating that, but that's just me. And if I have those kind of issues, I take long walks in the woods, and that seems to heal a little bit. But anyway, the experience that I've had here, I want to thank you as a community staff, as a board. And hopefully, if you see me out on the street, you won't shoot me or throw anything at me, no. I've enjoyed the time that I'm here, I still have a couple more weeks, the board president told me I had a couple more weeks, and that's fine, I can go back to my full-time retirement. My wife says I'm not retired, but anyway, I won't have the day-to-day stuff to worry about. The office staff have been a great help. I mean, if I had questions, eventually I figured out who I needed to talk to. But I can tell you right now, the two people on both sides of me here, Jeremy has been, you couldn't ask for a nicer situation. He's got the history, he's got the background, and I could ask all kinds, you know, give me the lowdown, you know, where's this coming from, those kind of things, and he was pretty much on in most cases. And not that I agreed with it, but it was the idea, at least I knew how to tread through the water, knowing that these things are out there, and I need to be aware of them and so forth. It's been exciting to watch Ruth grow as a board president. She's taken on, in my opinion, a lot of responsibility, but I think she has showed the leadership that she needed to show to lead this group. It's not an easy task to hire a new superintendent. It's not an easy task to bring a new board member on, and this board has been through quite a bit. And I do want to wish you well, and I'll think about you a lot, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Mr. Michael. And you'll, you'll be here on June 4th?
Yes.
Mr. Turlflinger, I believe you're next.
Okay, real brief, we've still got a lot more to do tonight, a couple of quick dates here. May 16th, they're going to have an open house on the house that the Heartland Career Kids built this year. May 22nd is the Heartland Certificate Presentation, along with the scholarships presentation. That will be at Honeywell at 7:00 PM. May 20th, 7:00 PM, the Media Arts Premiere Night. The Heartland Honeywell Media Arts Program that they're really putting a lot of money into, it's part of that Eagles Theater. I don't know a whole lot about it, I know just enough to be dangerous, but I know the kids work really hard, and they have some fine technology down there. They are going to present their original student video productions at 7:00 PM at the Honeywell Center, so, yeah, so go down and give them some support, and... And in closing, today, I got, they had two sessions, I got to attend one. NACE International is the National Association of Corrosion Engineers. Anything that's buried in the ground is subject to corrosion and there's a, I think the guy said there's 42 countries involved in it and I forget how many, it's well over a million people. The gentleman is a member of that, but he actually works for Nitsco. And he came in and met with one of the classes today and just kind of exposed them to corrosion control. You can't stop it, you just control it, but it's a billion, I've talked about it a little bit before, it's a billion-dollar industry and most of the people doing the work look like me and they got gray hair and wrinkles and they're heading for the door and they're really having trouble. So he's going to come back next year with, they're in association with Purdue University and put on a class for entrepreneurship, the welding kids and the electronic kids. Basically what the man said is if you're decent at math and you can run a computer and you understand how to work a voltmeter, that when you graduate from high school, you can take a $3,000 class from NACE and walk into any pipeline company in the country and get a job. And the guy looked right at the students and said, "If you can't come see me, 'cause I'll hire you." I was very, very excited. I think Mr. Underwood had to go this afternoon. That's all I got. Exciting times.
Thank you.
So now we're at the portion of our meeting for board vacancy interviews. Mr. France will meet the candidates out in the hallway. Our intent is we had everyone who sent a letter of interest and then accepted our invitation, everyone who sent a letter of interest received an invitation to interview and those that are here tonight are the ones who accepted that invitation to interview. So there was one who decided to withdraw their name. We sent to the candidates a request for them to prepare an opening statement and in that opening statement to share what reasons motivated that person to apply and also the strengths they possess. And then after that opening statement, we'll ask two questions which the candidates also receive. The first question is what do you feel are the most pressing issues facing MCS? And the second question is how do you advocate for what is best for students when the decision you make may be unpopular? There will not be a selection tonight. We will meet in executive session and process what we hear. And then on May 28th, at 7:30 A.M., we will vote on the new board member and we will also vote for the superintendent. So that happens. It's a very odd time, but I believe it's quite convenient for our staff members because they have a breakfast on May 28th at, I think, 8:00 A.M. or 8:15 A.M. And so we're doing that meeting in the morning and then the superintendent candidate pending an approval by the board would be able to address the entire staff at that celebration breakfast. So we also ask candidates to limit their remarks to 10 minutes and Mr. France will time that. Should I, should I do a secret knock?
Yeah, thank you. I would like them just to give us an opening statement and I'll ask these two questions. Is that what goes? I thought they could go to the podium.
Hi, Mr. Hacker. and then I'll ask two questions.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Craig Hacker and I'd like to give a brief description of myself and my family. My wife Rita and I recently celebrated 21 years of marriage. I have two children currently enrolled in the Manchester Community School System. My daughter Addie is completing her junior year. Last night she had the last match of the season in what was her first year of tennis. In the fall, she will begin her senior year on the girls soccer team as well as being a kicker on the boys' football team. My son Colby is currently completing his eighth grade year. He is currently finishing his first year of soccer and is playing baseball at the MRA. In the fall, he will begin playing on the high school soccer team and in the winter, he will be heavily involved in the Science Olympiad. Most recently, he was elected last week as freshman class president beginning of the fall. As you can see, my family is heavily involved in the school system and all the opportunities that it has available. As parents, we ask our son and daughter to prioritize academics, but also encourage them to become active in athletics and clubs as well. We feel that being in these extracurricular activities will allow them to build social skills, something that will allow them to be successful in life after high school. With the exception of the time I was at Purdue earning my degree, in the first two years of my marriage, I have lived in the North Manchester community my entire life. The first two years of our marriage, Rita and I lived in Warsaw because that's where we're both working. The primary reason we decided at the time to move to North Manchester was because we wanted our children to attend the Manchester Community Schools. We made this decision before we even had our children and this is a decision we have never regretted. It's my opinion that as a parent, I should be actively involved in the schools who are preparing my children for life. This is part of my motivation in running for the position on the school board. I feel as a parent, it's important to attend every function that my kids are involved in if possible. I am fortunate that my schedule allows me to do this. I realize that some parents are not so fortunate. Because of all the activities my kids are involved in, there are times when both of them have events going on at the same time. At that time, my wife and I have to decide to divide and conquer, so to speak, so that both of our kids are represented. I also feel that being a member of the school board would allow me to have a greater influence on the lives of my children as well as all the young men and children attending our schools. I feel that all too often, we as parents and adults in the North Manchester community look at the decisions a board considers as what's best for me, what is my opinion? Instead, I feel it should be of greater importance for the priority on what we feel is best for the young men and women of our school system as they prepare for the next phases of their life. Just as important to the needs of the students, I feel we should also focus on the needs of the teachers and administrators. I know as a parent, the teachers spend much more time with my kids than I do during the school year. And in no way am I saying that board members should not seek the input from the public because an elected official, a board member represents a public who has elected them. And I also understand and respect that we do have a fiscal responsibility to the community that we serve. However, I do believe that the first thing to be considered by a board member when making any decision is how it will affect the best interest of the students. My motives for running for the school board are based upon doing my part to make sure the young men and women in our schools have the best opportunities in preparing them for what comes next in life, whether that be continuing their education, entering the workforce, joining the military, or working with dad and grandpa on the family farm. I know that as a newcomer to the board, I would be one of seven members. My opinions and my vote would not be any more or less important than any of those, any of the other members. By nature, I'm not a spontaneous person. Although this can be frustrating to my wife and kids at times, I feel it's a valuable strength, especially when being on a board where there are various opinions on different proposals. Whether I'm deciding to allow my daughter to go to the movies with friends or whether I would be put in a position to hire a brand-new superintendent, I prefer to look at all options, the pros and cons of each available option, and not make any decision quickly or lightheartedly. I feel the students, teachers, and administration of the school system deserve to have a school board that is looking out for their best interest in providing them an outstanding educational experience.
Thank you. Mr. Hacker, what do you feel are the most pressing issues facing Manchester Community Schools?
I feel that the biggest item right now, there's several safety measures that would need to be addressed sooner rather than later. I do realize proposals have been presented in the past along with drawings and estimates. For the elementary school as well as the intermediate school, I know these proposals were put on hold and I understand the reasons, but I do feel strongly that the board needs to move forward in making these schools safer for the benefit of the students, teachers, and staff. My biggest concern regarding the safety of our children is the walk the seventh and eighth graders make every day between the two schools. The current semester we're in right now is the last, my son is in the eighth grade. This is the first semester for the last two years he has not had to make that daily walk. While in seventh grade, he was making the walk back and forth a minimum of three times per day. There was a period of time after one of the mass shootings we had that both of my kids told me they were actually frightened to go to school the next day. As a parent, that is disheartening, especially knowing the next day your son would be walking back and forth all day long. One, I realize that everyone in this room is aware of the safety concerns. One thing that's not always brought up with the walk back and forth are health concerns. These kids walk back and forth every day, whether it's 80 degrees or whether it's five degrees, whether it's pouring down rain or whether it's snowing. I know for a fact, my kids have come home from school totally soaked from walking back and forth in the rain all day, and I know they have missed school because they were sick from walking back and forth all day. I feel that is something that needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed quickly. Something that was discussed tonight is also the roof in this building. It's needed to replace for a long time and I feel it's the best interest of all who use this building to get it replaced as soon as possible. I don't claim to be an engineer or an architect, but I know that structural inefficiencies can occur and need to be dealt with in a timely manner. I also know over time, if there's enough moisture, mold can form, which is another health issue that could face the students and the people using this building on a daily basis.
Thank you. And how do you advocate for what is best for students when the decision you make may be unpopular?
As a parent of two teenagers, I have much experience in making decisions I feel are best for them yet are very unpopular. A lot of people in this room agree with that, I would assume. Unfortunately, as parents, we do not always see eye to eye with our kids. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I feel every decision considered by the school board should be a decision as to what is best for the students, teachers, and administrators. I see a large correlation between being a parent and being a member of the school board. I do know that all the school board members currently are parents and have had in the past to make decisions that our children do not necessarily agree with. At every meeting, you make decisions which you feel are best for the students and the staff of Manchester Community Schools. Some of these decisions are popular and some not so much. As a parent, I make decisions every day that I feel are best in the interest of my two children. Some of these are easy decisions that do not take much thought, such as whether to allow my son or daughter to go to the movies. Some decisions are harder, such as whether to allow my daughter to play high school football. By the way, I said yes. As a member of the school board or any school board across the nation, I think it should be expected going in that some of the decisions made will be unpopular as part of what you sign up for when running. Over the years, I have written several letters to members of the board expressing my views. I always include in the letter these words. I know being a member of the school board is a thankless job. I believe that as well as you do. There have been some very tough decisions the board has had to consider over the last few years, whether to let a teacher go or whether to build a fieldhouse. I am sure this has caused some members of the board friendships and maybe even some awkward moments at family gatherings, but you made the decisions you felt were the best for the school system and the community as well. I mentioned a few moments ago that I know it's a thankless job to be a member of the school board. Although I have never been a member, my father was for over 10 years. He was pretty thick-skinned and never said much positive or negative when he came home from meetings. The only thing we found out about the meetings was what was written in the newspaper. Several years ago, after his passing, we went through his things and we found a shoebox full of letters he had recited, received while serving on the board. There were dozens of letters, if not hundreds. Most of them were what I would call hate mail. Most of these were unsigned. I'm sure none of you have ever received one of those. All were handwritten, as there were no computers at the time. My sister and I sat down and read all of these letters one by one. When we were done, I asked my sister why anyone would subject themselves to serving on the school board, yet here I am. I would appreciate your consideration of electing me to serve on the Manchester Community School Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Not too good at public speaking, so we'll see how this goes. Thankful for the opportunity to come before you for the position of the school board. I've worked, my present job I've worked at, worked it 20 years. I'm a grad of Manchester High School. My daughter was a grad of Manchester High School. My current girlfriend is a grad of Manchester High School. Her daughter is a current sixth grader, which will be graduating soon at MIS. Some of the things I've done in the community that relates to some of my community service is I've coached pony league, I did several years of that. I coached junior girls while my daughter was in softball, so I've coached many years of junior girls. I umpired at the complex. I was assistant track coach under Mrs. Castle. And I've been a board member of the MELC, Manchester Early Learning Center, for about 12 years, I think I served there. So going forward, the reason it's motivated me to come here tonight is basically community involvement. We always say if we don't agree, we have our own opinions, you know, the way you can get those opinions really, you know, talked about or whatever is to be involved and to be in a position to make those decisions and recommendations and have those discussed. Call of service, we all know, various things that we do, no matter if we're coaching, assistant coach, a parent, you know, helping doing this wherever, you know, it's like a call of service, they come and do that. Some of my strengths would be that I've served on the board for 12 years. I served under Jim Smith, the president. I served as VP, doing various roles as there, chaired some meetings as well in Jim's absence, part of some committees, mostly a lot of fundraising, lots and lots of fundraising. My other strength is willing to volunteer. I volunteered for many things. I volunteered for the track position, was offered to me to be paid. I took it unpaid. It was offered to me to be paid. I took it unpaid because I felt that I just wanted to help. To be an advocate for Manchester Community Schools, like I said, I'm a graduate. My daughter's a graduate. She's currently in ISU to be a teacher in minoring in special needs. So, education has been kind of a part of me as far as being at the MLC for twelve, the early education, and as well as my daughter taking on her role. And one of the other strengths is I do voice my opinion. If I have it, you'll certainly hear it.
So, what do you feel are the most pressing issues facing Manchester Community Schools?
I do apologize that I don't keep up with the school board functions. Like I said, I just got finishing up serving my board tenure for Manchester Early Learning Center in December. So, my focus was a lot on that center there. And so, I think a lot of your pressing issues would be, from what I heard tonight, would be the roof. Seems like you guys need to discuss that and get that resolved. Maybe board community relations, getting information out there to the community, whether it be negative or positive, relaying some information out there. I know everybody has the opportunity to come to a meeting, but it is hard to get people to come to a meeting. So, I feel that, you know, somehow get the information out there so, you know, most of the community can see what you guys are doing, what you guys are voting on, what you guys are proposing, maybe some, you know, like the big projects that we had. And I guess another issue that you guys are facing would be to find a new superintendent, which is vitally important for Manchester Community Schools.
And then, Mr. West, how do you advocate for what is best for students when the decision you make may be unpopular?
That's a good question. As a board member, sometimes your decisions are not very popular. Reason why you have many members into a board, so you can get different ideas, different suggestions that you can discuss. So, if I was to be selected as a member of your board, I think some of my decisions would be to, what best for the students, the whole, the student body as a whole, and not just maybe a select group of students. So, it's best, you know, what's best for the students as a whole and not just every student. Also, when you make a decision, you can only make a decision with the information that you have, with the information you receive. So, when it comes time to make a decision, it's nice to have all the information in front of you so you can make a good, educated decision that you feel comfortable with as a member. And as far as an unpopular decision, if I was a part of the board, somebody didn't like my vote or my decision, I would simply ask them to come to the meeting, be involved, and maybe even put your name in the hat for a school board position as well.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised here in North Manchester. I went to school at Manchester High School, and later I went on to study electrical and computer engineering at Purdue. After graduating, I worked in Michigan City as a production engineer for a few years before eventually moving back to North Manchester and to help run a family business here in town, Custom Magnetics. Over the past twenty years in business, I've had the opportunity to travel all around the world. I've visited modern cities like Singapore and tiny farming villages in India. I've seen some truly interesting places, but I've always considered North Manchester home. When it came time, my wife and I both agreed that we wanted to raise our children in this town and in this school system. I believe in this community, and as a parent, a local business owner, and a former Manchester student, I want to be sure our schools continue to thrive. In my professional life, I've noticed that some of the most effective teams are those whose members have a wide range of backgrounds and personalities. You need someone on your team with vision. You need a communicator, a devil's advocate, someone who knows finances, someone who can look at the big picture, and someone who can worry about the details. The more these roles you fill, the better your team will function. As an engineer and someone with a background in manufacturing, I believe I could bring a new perspective to your team. Engineers are essentially problem solvers, and that's basically what I do all day. I'm not afraid to make mistakes. I'm always eager to hear new ideas, no matter where they come from. And I truly believe that no matter how well things seem to be running, there's always a better way and always room for improvement. Thank you.
So, what do you feel are the most pressing issues facing Manchester Community Schools?
For me, the number one issue right now would be getting the new superintendent hired in place and onboard and getting him or her up to speed and familiar with our school system. I think the board is well on its way to accomplishing that. I certainly appreciate what Mr. Pettibone and Mr. Michael have done by stepping in when we needed someone to take the helm. But we do need that stability of a long-term leader in place. For me, the next issue would be this walk between this building and the high school. I think we can all agree that at a minimum, the walk is extremely inconvenient, if not unsafe. I'd like to explore ways to address this problem. Finally, I think there's some general building maintenance issues discussed at this meeting, the roof, the boilers. You know, we've done a good job maintaining these facilities, but they're aging, and some of that stuff is going to have to be addressed in the coming years. I guess those are the main things.
Thank you. And then, how do you advocate for what is best for students when the decision you make may be unpopular?
Well, anyone who knows me knows that I probably haven't been too concerned with what's popular since I was an eighth grader at this school. That was a long time ago. To answer your question a little more thoroughly, I guess it kind of depends on the situation. If it's the kind of thing that can be openly discussed, I would do my best to explain my position to people, let them know where I'm coming from. But certainly, there's times where, you know, maybe it's a personnel issue and you can't openly discuss those things with the public. Those are tougher situations, for sure. I employ probably one hundred and fifty people, so I'm used to making decisions that people don't agree with. It happens a lot. So, I can handle that. I know I can't please everyone all the time. It is important, I think, to hear other people's point of view, though, at a minimum. In the end, you know, I guess I can only do what's best for those students.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Dixon. I'll let you begin with your opening statement.
Thank you very much. Good evening. For those of you I have yet to formally meet, my name is Michael Dixon. I use he here as pronouns. I'm excited for this opportunity again to be in front of you to run for a position, or not really running, but to be considered for a position on Manchester Community School Board. As a parent of a current Manchester elementary student and one soon-to-be student, education is near and dear to my heart and is a priority for me. I am a product of public education. I'm the first person in my family to go to college, and I've devoted my professional life to education. I have a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University, a master's degree from Grand Valley State University, and I'm currently working on a doctorate in educational leadership and administration at Indiana State University. I've lived here in North Manchester since 2011, and I've volunteered on various entities here in town, including the Economic Restructure Committee with Manchester Main Street and Manchester Early Learning Center. I'm also on the Town of North Manchester as a plan commissioner. I'm interested in being a part of the school board because I believe that I have the skills and the abilities to be effective in my position. Some of the strengths that I believe I bring to the board or could bring to the board are connections to various entities here in North Manchester, the focus on diversity and inclusion, which was highlighted in the assessment plan that was done on the school corporation, and the ability to do research both in and outside of meetings. I have taken a number of assessments. One assessment that comes to mind is StrengthsFinder. And in StrengthsFinder, I have five main strengths. I'm adept at dealing with problems. I search for reason and causes. I am able to give serious care before making a decision. I believe that everything has a reason and that there are connections, and I am able to make a decision when needed. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. What do you feel are the most pressing issues facing Manchester Community Schools?
Some of the pressing issues that I believe are facing Manchester Community Schools are declining school enrollment. That is one of the topics that has been a part of the conversation since I've been attending board meetings, that we are discussing how do we address that issue with projections in the next ten years, losing close to four hundred students, which would mean a lack of funding from various entities, including the federal government. Remaining competitive academically, a lot of times when people suggest suggestions to the school corporation about how to attract new families to this community, how do we remain competitive academically while also offering opportunities for other ways for families and students to get involved? Cyberbullying, bullying and cyberbullying, I believe, are also an issue and a problem in this community. I don't think it's unique to this community, but I think that there are issues that I've heard from various students, especially those that become students at Manchester University. And we are a divided community. The issue that happened last fall, the ballot measure on the, what many term is the Field House proposal, really divided this community, and that's not the only situation that has divided this. But that one issue has divided this community, so figuring out how do we move forward together, yeah, all are a number.
How do you advocate for what is best for students when the decision you make may be unpopular?
I think when individuals make decisions, it is very important that all of the discussion that is able to be shared gets shared in a transparent, open, and honest way. We understand that we need to make tough decisions, and sometimes they're unpopular. But I think the more information people have, the better they are at understanding why someone has made or why an entity has regards to moving forward and having to cut some money out of a budget because of budget shortfall. And in making that decision, there were some things that were shared that many people believe were not shared in an open and transparent way. And I believe if it was shared in an open and transparent way, that individuals would, although they may not agree, would understand that better and figure out that it's not us versus them, but how do we vote?
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. So, I believe that concludes the board vacancy interviews. And we are at the portion of the meeting where there's comments from visitors. Are there any comments from visitors? No? Comments and questions from board members?
Just want to say thanks to everyone that threw their name in the hat for the school board position and, you know, just willing to put themselves out there, so.
I just second what Mike said.
I just want to give an update of the superintendent search. So, pretty much by now, at this point, we're bound by, just say statute, so we, I don't even know the right words, and I'm sleepy right now. But we posted the contract, so people could see it. We had our hearing, and now we have to wait another amount of time before we can name the superintendent. And so, that meeting is set for May twenty-eighth at seven thirty a.m. that I mentioned earlier. And at the same time, we'll name the next board seat. So, I just want to apologize in advance that, like, we're waiting so long, but that's just kind of the way that it came out. And then, I think, anything else? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and close our board meeting, and board will meet in executive session in a few minutes. Thank you.